Hi, I'm Gary Sanders. Welcome to Live and Local. Tonight, we're going to have a discussion with three of the supervisor candidates. We had a previous discussion with three other candidates, and it was pretty lively. So I'm hoping that tonight, we also have a lively discussion. Why don't we have the candidates introduce themselves and tell us where they're from? And then we'll get into it. Let's start at the end there.
Okay, I'm Mike O'Donnell. I'm a Johnson County native.
Go ahead.
Have been married to Marie Meyer of Solon for 37 years. I'm currently an Iowa City Council member. I have been Chair of the Johnson County Council of Governments, Chair of the Seats Paratransit Advisory Committee, and served my community in many different methods. Supervisor is the next step, and I'm looking forward to this discussion this evening.
Great. Thanks, Mike.
I'm John Schneider. I grew up on the Johnson-Worsted County line, North River Riverside. Married Carol Phobian, a farm girl from east of Iowa City. We have a purchased farm down by Lone Tree, and we farmed in the county for 28 years now. And have three children. Been involved with the Johnson County Agriculture Association. And been a big supporter of 4-H. And that's right.
All right. Well, good evening. My name is Rod Sullivan. I grew up on a farm near Sutliffe, Iowa, and I've lived in Iowa City for about 20 years. I am a social worker by trade. I'm married. My wife, Melissa Fath, is a Hughes Fellow at the university doing research in genetics. I have three kids. Rachel, Jordan, and BJ are all at Hoover Elementary in Iowa City. As I said, I'm a social worker by trade. I spent the last four years as the Chair of the Johnson County Democratic Party. I've been involved in all kinds of different activities and causes here in Johnson County, and I'm really looking forward to a chance to serve as supervisor.
Okay, well, thanks very much. Certainly a talented and qualified threesome, just as we had on the show two weeks ago. Let's say that you're really not running for supervisor. That by the powers granted in me by public access television, I have decided to make each of you king of Johnson County. All right? Not just supervisor. Mike, what would be your first edict as king of Johnson County? Anything you want. You can stretch your imagination to whatever lengths you want.
Well, without saying, Gary, the first thing I'd have to do is knight you.
Appreciate that.
The way you've served this community has always been a step above.
God bless you.
You know, what I'd really like to do is make sure, not only in Johnson County, but everywhere else, we have affordable health insurance. That's an incredible expense today for everybody, and it's risen so dramatically over the past couple of years. But I think I'd like to see everybody be able to afford to have health insurance.
That's great. All right. Thanks, Mike. John?
Well, I would say if I was king, I believe that we need to have more respect for people. I believe that respect is an asset to society, and when we lose that respect, when our society will go backwards. I believe in the Board of Supervisors, our most important job of being human services. And that's what my biggest emphasis would be. That's what my concern is, is whenever we spend money, as long as there's money left for the Human Services Department.
Okay, Rod?
You know, Gary, I've spent my whole life fighting the power. You give me all that power, I don't know what to do with it.
Well, you've got it.
More of a Robin Hood, you know, steal from the rich and give to the poor.
That doesn't mean you wouldn't take money from rich donors, though, right?
I would take it from rich donors, rich and poor alike.
Okay, good.
If everybody was listening. No, I think if I were king, Gary, I actually sort of like John's answer. And I think I would kind of follow that with just sort of a general edict that let's all treat each other a little better. I think that's a good way to start. So I'd go with that.
Okay. And by the way, in this discussion, which I hope can go for an hour, anytime, jump in with what anybody else says or what I say. You know, if I make a mistake, just tell me, I'm off. And if anybody else makes a mistake, you know, I know we'll all be polite because it's Iowa. John, you mentioned human services. What is going well with human services in the county today? And what's not going so well? What would you like to improve upon?
Well, I think we've got good human services in this county. But there's always a room for improvement. We've come a long way since the '70s, when I got out of high school. I like that they're looking at putting a building out, the county farm there, for people with some mental illness, making some room for those people. They need some freedom in life, but they also need a little structure in their life, just to make sure that they have their needs met.
Okay. Mike, how about you? What do you see as things that are going well with social services, human services in Johnson County? And what are some that you would like to see improvements on?
Well, there's many different agencies in Iowa City, Gary. And I've served on aid to agencies where we've divvied up money. I think what's really going on is the people in this county. Anytime you ask for volunteers, there's an abundance. And that's a tremendous asset to any program. I would like to see more done in the way of mental health.
Anything specific, or?
Well, many of... Iowa City has a homeless shelter now, and they're looking at expanding. And many of these people are due to lack of medication or counseling, rehabilitation of some kind. They end up under the bridges, and you know, it's really a terrible, terrible lifestyle. And I would like to see that group be helped. But I think we're moving in the right direction. You know, we have so many agencies and so many good people to serve them. I think we're doing well, but we can always do better.
So nothing in particular that you want?
Mental health, I'd like to see that expanded.
More money in the county?
I would like to have more money. I'd like to put more money into all human services.
How much does the county spend on mental health? I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know that answer either.
Right around $10 million, I believe, Gary. It's $10 million is for mental health, mental retardation, developmental disabilities, and brain injuries, I believe. It's right around $10 million.
Okay.
And see, we have people incarcerated that have a mental problem. And there's got to be some kind of mental diversion there where you can have treatment for those folks.
So can we get more money somehow from the state, from the federal government?
You know, I've dealt with budgets for the last seven years at City of Iowa City. I'm very good with a budget. It's a matter that you apply for grants, you be active. Yeah, I think we can get more money.
Okay. Rod, what do you see as what's going well? And what isn't going, what needs to be improved in social human services?
Let me tell you, Gary. First of all, I've been a social worker. That's how I've spent my whole professional life. I've been a volunteer in this community. A lot of the agencies that Mike mentioned, I've been a volunteer for them. My wife currently is a volunteer at Free Medical Clinic. I've volunteered all over the place. We're donors as well, which I think is important. So yes, the people have to get involved. I think there are a couple other issues. Like I said, it's about $10 million of the budget that goes into mental health, mental retardation, developmental disabilities, and brain injuries. There's another probably $7 or $8 million when you include things like DHS, seats.
And would you say what these acronyms are?
Oh, yeah. Department of Human Services, Specialized Elderly Transport System, the paratransit, basically, is seats. And there's the Department of Public Health does a lot of things like WIC. So I mean, there's a lot of human services that the county is responsible for. It's about a third of a $52 million budget. So human services is a big part of being a member of the Board of Supervisors. And I think that I bring that experience to the board. Now, I do think there are a lot of things going well. We have some really good provider agencies, and a lot of counties don't have that. So that's certainly to our advantage. One thing I'd like to see us improve upon, this can be kind of a long thing, so bear with me.
I'll cut you off.
All right.
You're bogged down here, you know.
Johnson County, along with every other county, the state decided a few years ago to buy into mental health services. But they won't give the county money, state money, if the county doesn't spend all their local money. Now, Johnson County has, I think, for three consecutive fiscal years, not spent all of our money. You spend it down to below a certain percentage. So you're allowed to maintain a certain percentage. You've got to spend below that, and then you get the state money. We haven't done it.
And why is that?
I don't know.
Who is the Director of Mental Health in this county?
Elaine Sweet. Now, I know the board has, it's come to their attention, and they've kind of formed a committee. But this, you know, the committee should have been formed three years ago. And we haven't worked quickly enough on that. And so if I'm elected to the board, I'm certainly going to make sure that we spend the money we're supposed to spend. Because either A, we're taxing the people too much, or B, we're not spending all the money we should spend on services. And frankly, I think it's B.
But didn't we have a problem back a short time with spending for services ahead of time?
Yeah, we did. But I think that's a separate issue. That was just a financial management issue.
But isn't that in a sense, right, spending the money on hand rather than letting it? You know, there's an old theory in government, you spend it or you lose it. But didn't that go along with that?
No, I really think they were two separate issues. They, you know, you work with a very strict fiscal year. And I think the difficulty there was they wanted to spend ahead, which you're not allowed to do.
To spend ahead, to spend the budget down, is what I understand.
Well, I understood they had the money was budgeted there. If they didn't use it, they would lose it. And they were worried about taking a smaller share the next year.
Right.
As a farmer, we do budgets every year for our crops and things. But the only difference between the government and the budget I do is I budget for my needs and my wants. And you have to take care of your needs first, then you go for your wants. And that's where I think they were, we need to talk to our legislators. Because if there is some reason that our county employees had been efficient, where they were saving the money, and it wasn't necessary that year, that's not to say it won't be necessary the next year. But I think a lot of times, the supervisors need to lobby our legislators and let them know the problems we're having, so that they can try to fix them from there. Because they mandate all these programs, and I'm not sure they all understand what they're mandating. They don't fund the programs.
Wait, just put your mic back up there.
And that's what makes...
John, hold up. Put your mic back up. You've got to go in there. Just take your time.
You're on a roll.
You are on a roll.
But I don't think our legislators understand the programs they're mandating to us with not funding them. And they have to allow us some sense of, you need to save money whenever you can. We also need to spend it where it's needed. And if we can save a little and bankroll it to the next year, we shouldn't be penalized. And I understood that this was going on in other counties, too. It's just that the state decided to make an example of Johnson County, is what they did.
Okay. Well, let's move on. You know, another big issue is obviously development. And certainly, the people in the north corridor want to know where you stand on a variety of issues. Particularly, I know there's a very active group out Newport roadway. And there's a couple of different possible plans. Prairie de Sheen Road going paved and straightened and widened all the way out to the dam after it passes Newport Road. Newport Road, a new straightened road linking up Prairie de Sheen and Highway 1. Who wants to grab this one?
I'll grab that.
All right, grab it.
You know, we've all been out there a number of times. And I told the folks out there at one meeting that I learned to drive on Prairie de Sheen Road illegally. I was probably 14 years old when I learned to drive my brother's car on that road.
The statute of limitations has run out on that.
That's why I mentioned it.
Okay, good.
It really is an incredible area. And the Board of Supervisors just voted on a five-year road plan. And it included Prairie de Sheen, Newport Road, and part of Sugar Bottom Road. And it was a very small part of Sugar Bottom Road. But the five-year road plan, I believe, sets in place a theory on how they want those roads to develop out there. And in my mind, you can improve the existing roads. And you can add a bicycle path on the side or something. But anything you do to those roads, I'm a strong believer, has to match the character of the area. You have to maintain the reason why people move to that area. And I've always thought that that road should be a scenic road.
You're talking about Newport Road?
Yeah, in particular. Well, and Prairie de Sheen, you drive out to the reservoir, and Sugar Bottom for that matter. Now, I've talked to these people, and you know, there's a lot of talk about development, Gary. But to their credit, I've not heard one of them mention, hey, I don't want somebody moving to this area. I just want input on the road. And I think that's real responsible. I think it benefits everybody when you clearly identify a need for change and create some kinds of agreement out there on how this should be done. But should the people be involved in that process out there? Absolutely. And should we take every step to try and preserve what we have out there? Yeah. And the problem is, we have, in 1960, the Board of Supervisors, during the '60s, zoned the entire north corridor residential. And that's over 15,000 acres. And I don't question the wisdom at that time, but I question the value of zoning that many acres with one fell swoop. And now we have all these people sitting on the ground out there, zoned residential. It's incredibly expensive land. And you know, carry on development. If I'm rambling here, cut me off.
No, I'll cut you off. You're rambling. So far, you're doing great.
It's estimated that our county, in the next 20 years, is going to grow in population by 50%. I don't know if I'm fully convinced that it's going to grow that much. But there clearly is going to have to be areas developed for people like that, for that amount of people to come into any given area. But that's where a long-range plan has to be put in place right now. But as for these people out in Newport and Prairie de Sheen, you know, I admire that group of folks. I admire their never say die ability to come in and try and be considered as part of that decision, and I support them fully.
So would you be in favor, flat out, of not touching Prairie de Sheen Road from Newport Road out to the reservoir?
That's not what they want, Gary.
No, I mean, they want it with a little extra, you know. I didn't mean, you know, with things on the side, bike paths and pedestrian paths.
We absolutely need a walking path and people with bicycles. But do we need a mini 380 out there? I don't believe so.
And what about Newport Road? Leave that alone, the way it is?
Newport Road with some improvements, and that's in the manner of guardrails and maybe a stop sign. Do you know, you can drive on Dubuque Street out to the reservoir, and the speed limit is 35 miles an hour. And it's kind of a given, isn't it, on these country roads, that the speed limit's 55? It seems absurd out there. Put a speed limit sign up, put a stop sign up. I don't think you want to lose the character of that area by taking all those curves out. Because the curves are natural for slowing traffic down.
John, what are you, where's your stand on these?
Well, I wasn't familiar with that road when we first ran until we got to meet with those people. And so I took a drive up there on a Sunday. And you can very comfortably drive 35 mile an hour on the road the way it is. So I really don't see, if we're going to do all this infrastructure for residential, why would we put a farm-to-market road in? And it's my firm belief, when you redo a road, you have to consider safety. And putting a road in that you can actually do a 65, 75 mile an hour will not be safety in the end. I think you have to make an improvement to the area. And I don't see a big, wide road as an asset to that area. And if you can't make an asset out of it, then you shouldn't do it. And the third thing I think you really have to consider is, you have to do these things with as minimum of negative impact to the local property owners as you can. And I don't see that happening with the road that they're talking. But also, you know, in talking to some past supervisors, you know, you have to realize the engineers were told to put a road up there. Well, an engineer likes to see a nice, flat piece of road that's wide and all clean. Well, that's not what most people want. And if you're going to, you have to, they are our employees. And anytime we build a school building, we're going to tell them what we want. And if it comes back and they don't have it, then you redesign a little bit. And that's the matter of where we have to redesign. But what really worries me up there is we have no comprehensive plan. Will we need to add all these houses and all of a sudden have to come up with the money for real water? What about the sewers? If we would damage the environment with all the sewers up there? I've been a farmer. I've been through this with the hog industry. We had to consolidate. Well, now we have problems with the contamination of our streams and our groundwaterers. And we'll have the same thing with the people. We may just not have the smell. So we should have had that plan before we even start about adding tax money for infrastructure, so we don't find out that we're going to come back with a bigger budget for upkeep, and then we lose it to human services.
Rod, what about these roads, and what about tax money for infrastructure?
Well, it's, yeah, hard to go third on this one.
We'll switch around.
I trust you, Gary. I agree that, I think frankly, the board dropped the ball on this one. Because John is absolutely right. Engineers do a road from point A to point B, and it's a straight line. And that is not what's called for out here. I think the folks in the area have done a fantastic job of presenting alternatives. Instead of just saying, we don't want it, they're saying, here are some possibilities. Would you consider this? I think that's great, and I think they've done an outstanding job. And I think they ought to be heard, because they've done some good work there. John hit on a really key thing, and that's our comprehensive plan. You can't just do a roads plan, because roads don't exist alone. They don't exist in a vacuum. You've got to have sewer. You've got to have water. You've got to have police and fire protection. You've got to consult school districts. There are so many things that need to happen besides just roads. And to just deal with roads is putting the cart ahead of the horse. And so I'm not in favor of any kind of roads plan until we've got our comprehensive plan updated to where it needs to be, so that it deals with some of those issues, so that you can talk about growth and cover all the things you need to cover.
So you would be against also, you know, the widening of Prairie de Sheen Road or the straightening of Newport Road?
I would be against anything other than very minor, a few guardrails and some reflectors and things of that nature. Otherwise, I think we need to keep the current road bed pretty much the way it is.
Okay. And this tax money for infrastructure. When does the public pay for infrastructure, and when do the developers pay? Anybody want to try that?
You know, that's a good point. And you need to include developers in paying for this. The Camp Cargill project up there, we have the developer that's going to pay, I believe, $4 or $10 million for the road. And I think it's perfectly acceptable to have someone to participate.
Yeah. John, Rod, anybody?
Well, I think they should do more than participate. I mean, I, you know, if I already live out on Prairie de Sheen or Newport or Sugar Bottom, and I've already got my land out there, and then somebody wants to, you know, cut a swath through a field and build a bunch of houses out there, I don't know that it's incumbent upon me to pay for it. I mean, I think that the people who are going to live in those houses need to foot the bill. And that's what will happen. I mean, the developer puts it up front, but then he or she is going to recoup that money when they actually sell homes.
Well, right now, are the taxpayers of Johnson County paying for, you know, any sprawl that takes place out there? Are the developers paying for it? Who's paying? Anybody know the answer there, John?
Well, the county will be in charge of getting the roads up there. As far as what they're, what we're doing is supposedly, we're upgrading those roads. I don't think you're going to see county money used to put in roads, to make new roads, to help the developers. If we're making new roads, you know, to develop certain land, I think you're going to have to see developers do that more. And also, when we went to that fair meeting that night, that developer said they don't like to work with the county. And I think you're going to see more of the growth in the cities because they already have the infrastructure there. And that's what developers like to see.
And it's not just roads. I mean, you've got schools and police, fire, et cetera, all of that.
You know, where I come from, down by Lone Tree, you know, there's been people that wanted to develop down there a little bit. Of course, we're told we've got too high a CSR, so they want to keep it up in the north.
What's the CSR?
It's Crop Suitability Rating, which is being proven through research through Iowa State right now. That's an outdated mode to use. With the new, well, with no till and things like that, it's not necessarily a true picture anymore. But, you know, we're putting a lot of tax on our, to our Iowa City schools with a lot of this growth, because they're increasing, and they're trying to keep up. We have Lone Tree down there with a small school that would like to grow a little bit to be efficient, to be able to compete with the state for dollars. Because the states are, legislators are worried about these small schools. We've got a great school. We've got a great little town down there. We've got some small businesses. Sure, we won't have the businesses that Iowa City has, but it can be a nice bedroom community. It does not take very long to come from Lone Tree to Iowa City. And you worry about all the driving and the gas. You know, at the university, they have all these vans, carpooling vans. That can be arranged in the future, too. So I think we need to look at some of our bedroom communities, let them, you know, kind of come into this plan on adding homes to it if we can convince the people that's where they want to go. But so many people are advertising, this is where they have to be. They don't really look around when they moved in here to some of these smaller communities.
But you also have road standards, Gary. You have like a certain number of cars will travel on the road, and that will restrict growth on that given road.
That makes sense. Now, John?
Let me throw one thing out, Gary, because you mentioned about growth and who pays for it. Well, I know that the Planning and Zoning Department at the county said that only a couple recent subdivisions have actually paid their own way. Now, they've got a few clusters where they have lagoons and some shared wells and things like that. And they're built on small enough lots. And in certain places that, for every, it used to be for every dollar that was put in, it was costing the taxpayers who live here now something like $1.20. I don't know if those statistics are exactly right, but they're close. So just now, I know Westcott Heights is one they point to, which is just off Prairie de Sheen. That's one of the first ones where we're seeing a dollar-for-a-dollar match. So, you know, growth has to be done carefully.
John, speaking of dollars, you're kind of the under-financed candidate up here. I have two questions. Now, first off, throw this out. What do you think about candidates running for supervisor, you know, and talking about development when they're taking money from developers? Do you have any problem with that?
I never worry about people, who they take their money from. That's their prerogative. I'm not sure that it makes a lot of difference, because we have a, we've got a large population. We have a large watchdog in this area, and you're up for election every four years. It was my belief, I'm not a person that goes and asks people for money, but I have had more people all the time give me more money. And I knew what I wanted to spend for myself. And I just didn't feel, for the dollars that that job pays for, I just don't feel like it's an important issue to be the top money spender or the top money getter. I think it's more of an issue of talking to people, getting their support, telling them to talk to 10 more people. People see where you're coming from, and responsible people make responsible government. And I think people are seeing that with me.
Well, I'm going to ask you a hard question, John. Do you think that makes you any less of a serious candidate, that you're not out there raising money? That people might look and say, well, he's not really, he can't win this because he's not raising any money. He's got no yard signs that I've seen. Maybe you have someone else.
I've talked to a lot of people, supporters, and they like that fact that I'm not spending the money. They like that. They know that I'm conservative enough. They worry about their tax dollar. They know that I'm, when I come to the office, that I'm going to work with the other supervisors, and we're going to control the spending the best we can, but we're going to take care of people.
So you are a serious candidate?
I'm a very serious candidate.
Okay, all right. You know, people are wondering about that. They don't see your yard sign. They don't see the advertising.
I guess I haven't talked to those people. But a little $2.40 yard sign does just as much as one big $5 yard sign, because people still see it.
Okay. What about this money from developers? What do you two think about that, either one of you?
Well, I think it's very important that the public knows all of the money that everybody has gotten, and where it comes from, and who those people are, and what their interests might be. might be. So I don't think it matters if the person is a developer or a teacher or what their, you know, what their vocation is. I think it's really important, though, that that be public information. And I think it's important that the people look at it. Because the fact of the matter is, you know, you need to know, I think you can judge a person sort of by the company they keep. You know, and so I think you take a look at the list of people that have contributed to John or myself or Mike or any of the candidates, and you get some idea of, well, these are people who must trust that person, respect that person, think like that person. And so I think it's incredibly valuable. So I encourage people to do it.
And right now, you have to go to a website, the State of Iowa, and you can call the county auditor at 356-6004 and ask for elections. And they will tell you how to access the website for the State Board of Ethics and elections. So you can find out how much these folks have raised and exactly who their donors are. Mike, what do you think about that? Does taking money from developers mean anything or not mean anything?
Well, you know, I equate that, Gary, to taking money from our disabled.
Really?
Oh, sure. We've got a broad range of support out there. And I hope you're not suggesting, because you build or work in the construction industry, that you shouldn't be allowed to participate in the process.
Oh, no, no. I'm just wondering.
But, you know, I'm very proud, you know, we set a goal to raise $5,000 for the primary. We normally raise between $10,000 and $12,000 during a council race. And I thought that was too much. We put limits. We put limits on how much we're gonna spend. But no, we don't criticize who wants to participate, and it certainly is public information.
Right. Now, you said you equated getting donations from developers with donations from the disabled.
Absolutely. It's people that support you.
But, you know, the developers, I mean, development is a huge issue out there in the county. And I think we could all agree about disability issues, that we wanna see more access. But I think on development, it's, often leads to arguments. So it would seem to me that that isn't quite the same.
I don't think it does, Gary. You know, when you sit on a council or on a board of supervisors, you're regulated by zoning codes, ordinances, and so forth. When people meet all the criteria that you as a governmental body set forward, you approve it. I mean, and that's just it. Once you, if somebody comes in, meets all the zoning, they've met every code that you set forth, you can say no. I always said he did that two years ago and got sued for $60,000. You remember that?
Yes, I do.
So, yeah, you really, there's checks and measures to balance that. And you have an extremely competent planning and zoning commission. You have a very competent staff. And any project has funneled through both of these bodies before it gets to you.
Okay. Well, I don't know. We'll let the voters decide whether it matters if you take money from developers.
Sure.
What about, you know, your basic environmental sort of core beliefs? John, do you belong to any environmental organizations or fish and game organizations or anything like that?
I belong to the Johnson County Agricultural Association. I've been involved with no-till farming for 15 years. I don't believe that we go out to intentionally damage anything, but I do believe people first. I mean, if there's a tree there that has to be moved and it's affecting people for liability or whatever, you know, some of those things have to be taken care of. But I do believe we keep a strong environment going because we've all gotta live here. My kids are gonna be drinking this water in the future when I'm gone. My grandkids are. And we have to take care of it.
And no-till, for those of us who aren't farmers, could you?
Well, basically, I don't work up my ground anymore, at least 99% of it. There's always, you know, a workshop that you may have to do a little disking, but I just, I take a planter out there and we go right out and plant it. Anymore nowadays, our equipment is, with technology, has made so much better to plant the crop that you could almost plant it right in the middle of a gravel road and have a corn plant come up. And with the no-till, we save a lot of sheet erosion. And I'm just a big believer in the no-till part of farming and...
Okay. Mike, do you belong to any environmental organizations?
No, I don't.
Fish and game or anything like that?
No, I don't. Well, I'm the greatest fisherman in the state of Iowa.
I've heard that.
That's a little-known fact. But we participated in picking up Ralston Creek and so forth. We get involved. We have, and you know, one thing I like that the county's done is they had an ordinance where if you do a clustered subdivision in the county, you're required to have so much green space. I believe it's 50%. And builders were coming back and wanting to rebuild on that set aside outlot green space. And that was the old ordinance. A new ordinance now considers that 50% green space as part of the density of that area. So that's gonna protect that area. But now, you know, as a city, we've, like, we just worked with Southgate to have like a 20-acre sand prairie preserved down on the sand road. And that's, you know, it's very important we preserve stuff.
Has there ever been a development issue that came before the council in your years there that you voted against?
Well, I'm not wild about the Peninsula Project. I like the concept. I didn't particularly favor the developer. I didn't really like the Denerstein student housing project that was gonna go down on the sand road. But like I said, Gary, it doesn't matter whether or not you favor it. What matters is if it's met all the requirements. If it's been through planning and zoning, if it's been through staff, if it meets all the criteria that you set forward, you'll find the council votes together probably 99.9% of the time on these issues. Because we're required to follow the rules that we set forward.
So you couldn't vote no if the staff has said yes?
Well, you can vote no, Gary, but there's a good chance you could get sued, which we have been.
Okay. All right. Let me...
I mean, we, I don't know. I mean, I know what you're saying, Mike, but there's also times that, you know, you and others have voted against planning and zoning recommendations.
Do you have an example of that?
Well, like the Fairway Store, for example.
Oh, I supported that.
But that's against planning and zoning recommendations. So, I mean, there are times, for example, that, you know, it's not always quite so cut and dried that you don't really have any choice and...
Well, yes, it is. Because that was zoned appropriately down there. That was a matter of opinion. You know, I felt that we needed a grocery store in that area. I also supported Mercy Hospital on the corner of First Avenue Rochester. The staff didn't particularly agree with that. And we were just talking earlier that you're elected to vote your mind. And there may come a time when you disagree with the staff. And I do that when I feel it's necessary. But when a development comes in front of you, it's met all the requirements, Rod. If you vote no, you very well could be sued.
Let me ask you this. Unlike the city, though, the county planning director serves at the prerogative of the supervisors, correct? Unlike the city, where it's under the city manager, so the council doesn't have any direct control. So if you were a certain kind of a supervisor, if you didn't like what was being passed by the county planner and his staff, you could get rid of the county planner. John, is that your understanding?
Sure.
Not that I'm after Rick DeVore's job. Let's make that clear. But...
You're in charge of employees. And if they're not fulfilling their, the needs, then, you know, or if you have a good reason, you can let them go. But I like that Fairway Store down there, in all honesty. It makes it nice and easy to get there. But like Mike said, you have rules, regulations, and he might, the person that's coming in there might be the worst neighbor there ever is to you, Gary. But if he meets all the rules and regulations, you don't have a lot of choice. But to accept him, you can't turn one person down and let another person do something else just because you like the glasses he's wearing. I mean, it just doesn't, you know, you can't, if they meet the rules and regulations, you have to let them do it.
Okay.
But that's why there's five people on that ward so that we can work together.
Right. So if you had three that were feeling one way about development and two that were feeling another way about it particularly?
Gary, it's kind of different, though, in the county. You know, in the city, we're dealing with existing zoning.
Right.
And in the county, people are coming in and asking you to zone, zone off or a portion of an acreage for a home, you know, homestead exemption or farmstead split. So that's entirely different. We're talking, I'm talking as a city about existing zoning. And it is different in the county.
Okay. Speaking of different in the county, one thing we haven't touched on yet is labor relations. And we have in the county, at the present time, a person who was hired, Judith Perkins, to do the negotiating of contracts and other labor issues. Anybody have any feelings about this, this certain negotiator, her style, whether she's gonna continue in the future if you're elected? Any thoughts at all from any of you? Throw it up in the air. Don't be so polite. Just jump in.
Hey, I've been talking too much. I'm gonna let somebody else go first.
Well, I don't know the personality or the problem that we're having, but you treat all employees fairly. I mean, to me, when you fire somebody, they have to have a grossman misconduct in office. I don't know if that's there. I'm not so sure, though, in talking to people. My supporters out there, anyway, there's a lot of people, when they come into planning and zoning, and you'll hear the planning and zoning say, "Well, we're not having a lot of requests changed." That's because people have gotten tired of going up there and being told no. I don't think that anybody that's an employee and are best assets, but you don't tell people that are coming in for help, "This is the way it is." Tough. I'm wondering if we don't need a little bit of customer service training for some of the people that are dealing with the public. Because the public is your boss. And even if they're totally, without agreement to you, you still talk to them and reason with them. And if you can't get through to them, then you send them on to somebody that can at least talk to them.
Well, Mike, let's get, let's get back to labor negotiators. That's what I was trying to get at. Are you familiar with Judith's work?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
And there was a little bit of controversy there, Gary. And, you know, I'd really rather not comment on that right now. She's, the other supervisors have handled that, and I think they handled it effectively.
Okay. Rod, are you willing to touch this?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I mean, I guess I, I'll give myself a little plug. I was the only candidate in the supervisor race endorsed by organized labor, and I'm very proud of that fact. And frankly, you know, I have a real problem. You've got deputy sheriffs here who go out in the county and they put their lives on the line every day for all of us. And then when they go to the negotiating table, somebody who's making $135 an hour of county money is telling them that for whatever reason, they can't make $24 an hour. And I just have a real problem with the way that's set up. So I think it's important, too. You know, this is, we've seen problems at all levels of government with consultants and outside contractors. And we've got a county attorney here who had handled this for years without problem. And all of a sudden, we switched, and now we've got lots of problems. And I'm not sure that it wasn't a lot more cost-effective. I think it cost us something like $18,000 last year out of the county general fund to hire this consultant when the county attorney was doing it just fine at a fraction of the cost.
Yeah. Speaking of endorsements, have any of you been endorsed by any of the groups like Sierra Club or anything like that?
I, yeah, I never answered that question, did I?
I don't think so. Did you?
I am a Sierra Club member.
Okay, you are?
Yeah.
Are they endorsing at this?
I don't know that they're doing official endorsements.
Okay. Any of you guys endorsed by any other groups? I mean, give yourselves a plug. Rod gave himself a plug.
I'm also a member of the Johnson County Ag Association, like John, because I think we have the greatest county fair in the world.
Okay. But any other groups endorse you guys?
I don't ask for endorsements because people make up their own minds. And a leader or something says that he's gonna endorse you, it does not get you votes. It's the people you talk to that'll get you the votes.
Okay. Mike, any endorsements you wanna mention?
We've been endorsed by several, but it will be after the primary.
After the primary?
Yeah.
Playing it close to the vest here.
Yeah.
Because I was under the impression that the Democratic primary was all the marbles here. You must have a secret plan, I guess.
Well, Gary, we run to win.
Okay.
And we've done it twice.
I know you're all running to win.
You know, we have, I'm running as a candidate who's been elected twice. We have a good group put together, and I believe a good message, so...
Well, you know, let's talk a little about, since we threw out endorsements and people who support you. Mike, you, I noticed from your financial statements and yard signs and things like that, that around the county, that, to throw out a few names, Mike and Mary Jo Streb and John Ballmer and Dean Oakes and Willis Bywater and the Angers all support you, and they're all good Republicans. Are you the Republicans' favorite candidate for Democratic supervisor?
You know, one of the most prominent Democrats in this county used to be a Republican.
We don't, yes, I know.
And that's Dick Myers.
So you're, I know you're gonna sell John Ballmer on Democratic party.
Let me finish this. Dick Myers told me the best compliment he ever had was to see his Democratic sign in a Republican's yard. So I don't have any problem with that at all. I welcome support, Gary.
Okay.
I'm glad that my signs are in Democrats' yards because I think that's where you have to start. I've got some Republican supporters. I don't know that anybody has given me any money, per se. But I think it is important that, you know, this is a Democratic primary. And I think that it's important for folks who are Democrats to get out and vote in that primary because, you know, this is all the marbles, as you said. November won't matter. There probably won't be any Republican candidates. It's gonna be decided now. So anybody who's watching or listening, you need to participate on or before June 8th if you wanna have a say.
Absolutely.
Are all three of you gonna support the nominee of the Democratic Party here? Or if you lose, do you have any thoughts about running as an independent or Republican or anything else, any of you?
Can I go first?
Sure. I don't know.
Well, I'll throw something out. I actually put a challenge out to all the folks who are in the race. At the time, there were eight candidates. Now there are seven. And I put a challenge out there. You know, I served as chair of the Johnson County Democratic Party. And I know what it's like to go through a partisan election. And it takes an incredible amount of time and money and effort. And so I threw the challenge out to everybody who's a candidate, you know, all eight people or seven people now, to put in 100 hours toward the Democratic Party between July 1st and November 15th. So let's, you know, after the primaries are over, 100 hours toward getting John Kerry elected president and toward changing the Iowa Legislature back to a Democratic body. And I haven't had anybody take me up on the offer.
You know what? I would like to respond to that, Rod. You know, I have a full-time job. I served the city as a city councillor, and I'm running a campaign. And I've never needed to be challenged to do what I think's right. You know, I could say I challenge you for, to $200. You know, what does that accomplish? We're all gonna support our candidate, but I certainly don't need a challenge to do what comes natural. Like I said, it's very busy. When you first work, you second have a city council job, and third, you're running a campaign. So I didn't have time to answer your question.
I understand the busyness. I mean, you know, I've got three kids and everything, but, you know, it's important. I mean, it takes time to run a campaign. And I mean, I know I've put in far more than 100 hours on each of the last four presidential elections at least. So, you know, we need to do it. elections at least. So, you know, w- we need to do it and we need to get people committed to doing it. And, uh, it's important to the legislature. It's important to the presidency. Uh, I, I think it's incumbent upon Democrats to do it.
John, you're gonna support the candidate nominee for supervisor, no matter who it is?
I definitely am. I'm a member of the Democrat Central Committee for Lincoln Township, but, uh, I didn't send that in either. I mean, I gotta stand up for what's right and I wouldn't try to cow the rest of the people into doing it, doing something that I wanted. But, uh, if you did cow somebody into do it because they wanna to buy themselves some more votes, you're not gonna have a, a willing participant and it's not gonna do you any good. People have to, have to volunteer because they wanna volunteer.
Right.
Instead of somebody trying to tell you that you need to do this because it's gonna make you look bad if you don't, or it's gonna make you look good if you do.
Right. John, are you a lifelong Democrat, by the way?
I've been a lifelong Democrat since, uh, I ran for office and what I'm real proud of, uh, my dad was Washington County Supervisor. When he was elected in 1974, he was the first Democrat in, in that county elected in 50 years.
Really?
For public office.
Rod, what about you? How long you been a Democrat?
My, uh, dad didn't give me any choice when I was a little kid. I, uh, I think when I was 18, I flirted with, uh, libertarianism for a very brief time, but I've been a Democrat ever since.
Mike?
Well, that's a good question too, because I didn't have much choice when I was a kid about being a Republican. Um, but we, um, you know, I'm proud of the fact that I changed to Democrat.
When, when did you do that?
Oh, probably seven or eight years ago.
Okay.
And before that, Gary, I wasn't very active politically.
Were you a voter?
Um, not, I was not active politically. I became active when I had more time to do things.
When, when did you first register to vote in this county?
I would say in, um, 90 or 92.
92? Not 95?
Could've been 95.
Not July 18th, 1995?
That's a great day, that's my birthday.
It's your birthday, I know.
Sounds like you've been down there checking this.
I have been, I have been. As I...
Have you ever voted Republican, Gary?
I, I'm not running for office, but I, I noticed, I noticed it was kind of interesting, Mike, that you did not register to vote until you were 49 years old.
Like I said, Gary, I work for a living. We work very hard for a living.
I, I think with all due respect, Mike, you know, irrespective of your record or whatever or what your stands are, I think to wait till you're 49 years old to, to register to vote doesn't, doesn't give a very good example to the young people and even the early middle-aged people this county.
Boy, we've sure made that Ford Sunset no ham with, Gary.
Well, I've got the list here of all your votes and, and you have voted, but, um, I would have liked to have seen you voted before that because it seems to me that elected officials should set an example and, and we have to get people into the process.
And you know what? Since, since we've been elected, Gary, we've set a tremendous, we've set a tremendous example.
Well, I'm gonna let the voters decide on that one too.
I think, I think it's very important, obviously, that people do vote. I mean, hopefully people who watch this show, uh, y- you know, you may be really taken with me, you may be taken with John, you may be taken with Mike, maybe you don't like any of us and you wanna see what else is out there. Maybe you wanna write in Sanders, I don't know. Uh, the point is, i- it's a Democratic primary. Anybody can vote in it. Everybody should vote. I mean, we need people to vote in this thing. You can't sit it out. There is a difference between candidates. There are significant differences across the board. I think it's vital that the people get out and, and get their own interests represented and go to the polls and vote.
All right. Well, that's, that's a good segue to our, maybe our last segment. We got about five minutes left. You said there were differences among you. Um, do all of you agree that there's differences among you besides physiognomy or whether you wear glasses or not, or how long you've been a voter, or how long you've been a Democrat? Mike, do you think there's differences?
Well, Gary, that's kinda what makes the world go round, isn't it? The differences?
I thought it was gravity, myself.
Well, I'm talking differences as we, as we live.
Or centrifugal force, I'm not sure. Yeah, well...
Probably gravity helps in that. Uh, there are differences.
Yeah.
It's very clear. Uh, we, we've expressed those in, um, in forums.
Anything you wanna, we got, this is your chance. Don't, don't be talking to me in the lobby afterward.
You know, it's time for people to vote in this community. It, it's a real shame that we run elections, particularly in Iowa City, and get 10 to 12% of the people voting.
How can you say that when you weren't a registered voter till you were 49?
Well, you don't, Gary, I, I, I'm curious here about who you're supporting.
Who am I supporting?
Yeah, I'm curious about that.
Well, I haven't voted yet.
I voted, no, but you made it fairly obvious.
What I would, what I would like to say, a lot of people don't vote until they get mad. But don't hold it against anybody. Let's get the people out there. The biggest problem with the Democrats is I think we've got great guys here to run. Everybody has differences. The people choose their differences. But don't look for differences in people in being mad at people. You vote because you want to help people. And, but it still comes down to realization. People don't vote till they're mad.
Yeah. Well, speaking of being mad, speaking of being mad, I, I've gotta ask Rod this because, you know, you mentioned you were Democratic Party Chair. It's my understanding there were some people mad at you when you were Democratic Party Chair. That, uh, you know, you upset some people and I've heard some reports about that.
Yeah.
Think that's gonna detract from your, uh, vote total here?
Well, I would hope not.
Animosities?
Uh, I know that, uh, I know that the person who I think had the most difficulty with me when I was party chair, I'm very proud to say now has one of my signs in his yard. He, uh, he certainly wasn't very happy with me at the time and I don't know if he's still happy with me, but he at least has enough respect for me that he, he thinks I do a good job and he, he, uh, put my sign in his yard and that means a lot to me.
So you don't think there's any old animosities that are gonna surface?
You know, Gary, I think there has to be. I don't, I don't think you can, I don't think you can do a good job as a leader and not have at least a couple people who are angry with you. Now, I can't necessarily tick off, you know, five names that aren't gonna vote for me because of my, my role with the party. Uh, I think you just do the best job you can and hope that people, uh, respect your work and find you to be an honest and upstanding and decent person and, and, uh, that they'll vote accordingly.
And what about differences? You mentioned differences among the candidates and we have seven candidates. Do you wanna throw out any differences besides the three that are here tonight?
You know, I, I, I think it's about values. And I think that voters need to look at people who reflect their values, the values of the county. You know, what, what's this county about? I think, uh, my experience in Health and Human Services, I'm a foster and adoptive parent. Uh, I grew up on a farm, a century farm. My mom still lives out on the farm. A member of the Johnson County Ag Association. I've been a social worker for several years, uh, volunteered and donated to numerous, uh, uh, groups. I'm a member of AFT 716. I got endorsed by Organized Labor, a member of the Sierra Club. I was on the Yes for Kids Steering Committee that got the bond issue passed in the Iowa City Community School District recently. I'm a member of the Hoover PTA. I think all those things reflect the values of the people of Johnson County. I think that when the people look at the resumes of all the folks, I think that they're gonna find that mine is a very good resume for supervisor.
Well, I think, I think we've had some interesting discussions. Any final points? We got two minutes. Final word from anyone or should I just do the wrap-up here?
Just encourage everybody to vote June 8th. Um, there are three seats available. Um, it's a very important election, so I encourage everybody to vote.
Okay.
Yeah, June 8th or before, cause there are actually several.
Satellite voting.
Yeah.
Call the county auditor at three, five, six, six, zero, zero, four. Uh, we had three candidates on at the previous show. And if anybody wants a copy of that show, that was, uh, Terrence Nuziel, uh, James Knapp and Rick DeVorek. And that would be available here at three, three, eight, seven, oh, three, five. We could make copies available for $5. Uh, the same with this show, if anybody wants a copy. Non-known profits, three, three, eight, seven, oh, three, five. Uh, Pat Harney could not be with us. He called and we had already set this up. Uh, so those of you who are hoping to see Pat tonight, or previously, it just couldn't be worked out. Um, no slight was intended. Uh, we've got seven candidates, as we mentioned, to vote early, vote often. No. Uh, vote your conscience. You can vote for one, two or three. And I hope we have a good turnout. Any predictions here? Predictions? Any predictions? Anybody go out, wanna go out and make a prediction?
I predict the sun will come up June 9th.
Well, that's radical. Any other predictions? No, no solar eclipse on June 9th? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
All right. Mike, any predictions?
Um, I don't make predictions, Gary.
Not even on Hawkeye football?
Not even on Hawkeye football.
That's a disappointment. All right.
I, I like the idea of the sun coming up June 9th. That's, June 9th will be refreshing, win, lose or draw.
All right. Well, thank you very much for joining us tonight. This has been live and local. Uh, it's been an interesting hour. I hope you found it so. Again, if you want copies, call the studio, three, three, eight, seven, oh, three, five. Uh, thank you very much for joining us and we hope to see you next time. This show will be repeated several times, usually Saturday at noon and Monday at 7:30, all the way up until the primary. Thank you very much. Good night.
Okay.
We're out.